District 14, which is 11 municipalities in southern Kennebec County. Begin our afternoon session, public hearing of bills by introductions from our committee members, beginning with Representative Peckler.
Good afternoon. I'm Representative Peckler. I represent House District 54, the town of Tonsom.
Good afternoon. Representative Bruce Beckford, I represent District 63, which is most of Auburn.
Hello. Representative Stedman Seavy, I represent the counties of Kennybaum, Kennybaumport, and Bitterford.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Stanley. I represent District 143, which is East Palm, Almond Rock, Medway, Patton, Small Park, beyond all other counties.
Hello. My name is Adam Good, representing House District 127, as part on the west side of Bangor, and I serve as the House Chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Davis, and I represent Senate District 4, which is all of Catfish County and parts of Somerset and Penobscot.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Chase. I represent District 46, which is Durham, North Yarmouth, and part of Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. My name is Tom Schofield. I represent District 112, and I'm from the town of Weld, who represent Maine's High Peaks region, Franklin and Somerset County.
Thank you. And other committee members will be in and out. They're performing other functions and duties in other committees. Also with us this afternoon is our committee analyst, Julie Jones, and our committee clerk, Linda Lee, who will be glad to hand out any testimony that you have prepared for us. It's time for you to testify. Please also remember to sign in on the sheet when you come up to testify. So this afternoon, we'll be dealing with five bills, and we'll be presenting them in the order they appear on this yellow sheet that's available on the side of the room. So if there are no questions from the committee at this time, we will proceed with the first bill on our agenda, LD 501, an Act to Amend the Estate Tax Laws, presented this afternoon by Representative Stuckey, the co-sponsor. Welcome, Representative Stuckey.
Thank you, Senator. If I sit down, I won't be able to see you.
Turn the mic on for us, please, in front.
Is it on?
Oh, the light's not working. I guess you are on, Representative Stuckey.
I got the light down here. I sound on.
This is not working. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Senator McCormick, Representative Good, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Taxation. I'm Peter Stuckey. I'm from Portland, and I'm here today to introduce LD 501, an Act to Amend the Estate Tax Laws. This bill would reduce the exclusion amount for the main estate tax from $2 million to $1 million, beginning in January of 2016, adding approximately $15 million annually to the state's general fund. This bill is really about choices, about expanding our options when making spending decisions in the state's biennial budget. There's a deafening echo in this building that goes something like this: That may be a good idea, but we can't do everything. We've got to take care of those people already on waiting lists. I recently heard that argument myself when I presented a bill I sponsored that was the unanimous recommendation of the bipartisan commission to study long-term care facilities. Bill proposes to increase allowances to main care members who reside in nursing homes and PNMIs after they sign over their social security checks to the state to help cover their cost of care. The allowance would increase from $40 to $50 a month for folks in nursing homes and from $70 to $90 a month for folks in PNMIs. These allowances have not been increased since 1987. The reason given by those who opposed this bill in committee was that we could not afford the $1.5 million annual fiscal note. We have to make choices, and ending the waitlist is more important. I actually agree that clearing the waitlist for services for people with disabilities and mental health challenges is more important than funds to allow frail elderly folks to occasionally get their hair done or put a $10 bill in their grandchildren's Easter cards. But I voted to support the bill because I believe that increasing these allowances is more important than exempting the heirs of millionaires from paying a small one-time tax on their large inheritance. Imagine two widows living in a nursing home somewhere in Maine. Their rooms are right next to each other. They eat their meals together, they play cards, and watch TV together. They didn't know each other before becoming neighbors, but now they've become good friends. Both women and their husbands work hard all their lives. They took good care of themselves and raised good families. When the first woman's husband died, their children were grown and on their own. Their house was paid for, and they had $80,000 in the bank. When she moved into the nursing home, the family sold the house, and she went on the main care spend-down. Now, seven years later, she has $2,000 in the bank, $8,000 in other liquid assets, and a $40 a month allowance from her social security check. The other woman and her husband were millionaires. When her husband died, she and the family's financial advisor figured out how to transfer the house and other parts of her estate to her children before taxes. When she moved into the nursing home, she still had plenty of money to pay the bills, and seven years later, her allowance allowed her to pretty much do as she pleased. When the first woman dies, her family may inherit enough to cover those pesky end-of-life expenses, but maybe not. When the other woman dies, her family will be able to cover any and all expenses associated with her burial and with settling her estate, and as it is now, inherit tax-free up to $2 million. So here's the choice, as I see it: Return the main estate tax threshold to $1 million and add $15 million to the state general fund, and spend 1.5 million to increase the monthly allowance for main care members living in nursing homes and PNMIs by $10 and $20. Heck, we could double the increase to $20 and $40 and still have $12 million left over for some other things some people have said we have to cut or can't do because we can't afford them: Things like drugs to the elderly, children behavioral health services, basic safety net services, and focused efforts to end homelessness. Tomorrow, the Health and Human Services Committee will be making our report back to the Appropriations and Financial Affairs Committee with our recommendations on the biennial budget. Our committee agrees on much of what's in the department's baseline and proposed initiatives. And where we disagree, I think it's often because we disagree on available resources. This bill is really pretty simple. It simply refrains some of our choices. If it means a few wealthy people decide to leave Maine to avoid a one-time tax, so be it. This new revenue would allow us to bring a little more opportunity, support, and pleasure into the lives of some of our most vulnerable neighbors and our elders, and I think that's the way life should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Stuckey. Any questions from the committee, beginning with Representative Peckler, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here. My question is, you're making a lot of references to nursing homes and what to do with the money in the nursing home. Nowhere in that bill does it say anything about where that money's going to be spent except to the general fund, so I don't follow your testimony really that well.
Well, I'll tell you what. One of the things that I learned, actually, from people who were here before I was, was that if you wanted to do something in the legislature, in the budget, it was very helpful to be able to show where the money could come from to support that. That's what I...I could have filled up the whole $15 million if you...I could spend that in things that we're looking at right now in the other building. So, you know, it's...you know, it's a choice. And I've, in this building for going on my seventh year now, I've listened a lot to we can't do that because we don't have the money. And what I'm trying to say in this bill is, we have a choice about whether how much money we have. And you have people who are exempt, millionaires, who are exempt from a one-time tax, and we make decisions in the budget that are hard and sometimes hurtful to people who don't have those kinds of resources.
I appreciate where you're coming from on that. I would just...I would hate to see all these people lose the land and buildings that may be left to them because they can't pay $80,000 because the value of the land and buildings are worth a million, and they may be on a $30,000 salary. So explain to me, please, how they're going to pay for that without selling their family homestead that they've had in generations?
I'm not the expert there, I'm not representative, but from what I've heard in the past, because this conversation is not new to this bill or to me, is that there may be ways that you can work around and take care of people who are land-rich and cash-poor. I mean, I don't say I have this exactly right. What I'm trying to do is to introduce into the discussion in this building that there are other places where we can find resources to do some of the things that lots of people in this building say they would like to do if we had the money. So I might not have it all right, and if you can make...you can help me make it better, please, please do. But I...you know, I'm trying to...that's all I'm trying to do, is introduce that, the fact that we ought to get our heads up and look at an expanded array of choices other than, do we give poor people in nursing homes another $10 bucks a month, or do we end the waitlist? I think we ought to be able to figure out how to do both. So that's what I'm trying to do here.
Thank you, Representative Stuckey. Other questions from the committee at this time? CNN, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there co-sponsors of this bill who would like to speak in support of LD 501? CNN, you will begin testimony from those who would like to speak in support of LD 501.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Senator McCormick, Representative Good, and members of the committee, my name is Joel Johnson, and I am an economist at the Maine Center for Economic Policy. My organization is in favor of this bill. We think it would improve the fairness of our tax code and also the efficiency of it. I think it's important to just place in context here the amount of revenue that we're talking about with the estate tax when we make changes to it, and the number of resident mayors that those changes affect. We learned recently from Maine Revenue Services that under current law, about 150 estates are subject to the estate tax, that end up owing any estate tax, that is, their net value exceeds $2 million. And those 150 estates, of those 150 estates, almost half of them were left behind by decedents from out-of-state, who are non-residents. Now, the estate tax, under the governor's budget proposal, he would eliminate it, and it would cost in the neighborhood of $35 to $40 million a year. So that's $35 to $40 million in general fund revenue that comes from about 150 estates. And when you look at all the different ways that the state raises revenue in the general fund to pay for priorities, I think that we can all agree on in broad strokes, it's pretty clear that the estate tax is by far the most progressive tax that we have. And to me, it doesn't make any sense to eliminate it, and the estate tax cut that was passed in 2011, which increased the exclusion amount from $1 million to $2 million and flattened and simplified and lowered the rate structure, parts of that didn't make sense either. So I just want to point out that this bill would move the exclusion amount from $2 million back down to $1 million, but it would keep in place the lower rates and the simplified bracket structure that existed prior to the actions of the 120 legislature. And this bill, according to my estimates of Maine Revenue Services fiscal notes from the past, would raise about $15 million, and it would affect about 450 estates. Actually, it would affect 450 estates plus the 150 that are already subject to tax. So to me, it seems like one of the better ways that we have to raise revenue, and I think it makes sense to maximize it within reason. This $15 million that's raised could be used to provide direct property tax relief or property tax clearance credit, could be used to increase the homestead exemption statewide. Both of those property tax relief measures only affect Maine residents, whereas the estate tax affects maybe 80 estates per year that are resident estates. So I think it's a pretty reasonable way to raise revenue. Now, as to the concerns about family farms or small businesses having to liquidate their portions of their estate to pay their estate tax bill, we hear a lot of stories about that, and they're powerful stories. But I think the evidence that I've looked at, it doesn't...I think that those stories carry more weight than they should based on the evidence, and that most estates in Maine, most estates that are subject to the estate tax consist of stocks and financial assets and real estate. The reality is that small businesses and farms are valued according to their use as a business, and what they're worth under their current use, not what they're worth if you were to assess the farm by, you know, thinking about how much it would be worth if you developed it for condos. That's not my understanding of the way the estate tax works. And in fact, when the Congressional Budget Office back in 2005 looked at this issue and wrote a long report on it, they got their hands on a sample of federal tax returns, and they did some thorough analysis of how many farms and small businesses are affected by the federal estate tax at certain exclusion levels. And from that information, they were able...they found that if the federal estate tax in the year 2000 had a $2 million exemption, like Maine's does, that nationwide, there would be about 135 small businesses and 123 farms that would have paid any estate tax at all, and virtually zero of those farms and small businesses would have had, would have been unable to pay their estate tax bill without liquidating any of their assets. So I just want to inject some facts into this discussion about the estate tax. It's definitely an emotional issue. It's been made that way. There's a lot of anecdotes out there, but I'm not sure that some of those anecdotes bear scrutiny. So that's why we're in favor of this bill, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from Mr. Johnson from the committee, please. CNN, thank you very much. Just that one comment, is we're often pointed to other states as to what they're doing, like that's a good thing or something, but one of the statistics handed out last week by Maine Revenue Services was interesting, and that it showed 31 states do not have the estate tax. So for some reason, 31 states have decided that's not the direction to go, just to comment.
Thank you.
Others who would like to speak in support of LD 501?
Representative Good, other esteemed members of the Taxation Committee. My name is John Kazinsky. I'm here representing 24,000 members of the Maine Education Association, the MEA. The MEA represents educators in every one of our public schools in the state, as well as faculty and other professional staff at the University of Maine and in the community colleges. I'm here today to testify on behalf of MEA in support of LD 501. The question this bill poses is clear: Should Maine return to taxing estates valued over $1 million as Maine did prior to 2011? The answer from the MEA is an enthusiastic yes. Currently, about 13,000 people die every year in our state, and just over about 400, correction of my testimony, 400 families are subject to this tax. Yet every year, many of our state's 180,000 students in public schools are disadvantaged in their public education when compared to the funding for public education happening in other states and in other countries. For example, and this is to your point, Senator McCormick, what you just mentioned, sort of comparison to other states, the Center on Budget Policy and Priorities prepared last year a report showing that Maine has cut state funding for public schools by 7.3% per student since 2008, after adjusting for inflation. Every other state in New England did far better, with Massachusetts actually spending 6% more per student since 2008. When adjusted for inflation, we were one of the 10 worst-performing states in terms of what we spent to educate children in our state. Resetting the estate tax back to $1 million would have a tremendous impact on our students and our public schools and on local property taxes. This bill will create roughly $15 million. And here's an example of what we can do with $15 million, which is in my testimony: Hire over 200 pre-K teachers in this state. Universally, the research shows pre-K has a huge beneficial economic and academic impact on states. There was a study done by our own economist here at the University of Maine, Philip Trostle, where he writes, "High-quality pre-K would increase tax revenues due to higher education and earning potential. Government spending would decrease in prisons, jails, juvenile corrections, child protection, Medicaid, and special educations, and families would rely less on social assistance." $15 million will have 200...we can have 200 million more, 200 more pre-K teachers in our state. We can buy 300,000 new textbooks for Maine students. I would encourage you to ask teachers in your local schools. I've heard of science teachers using books from the 1980s. Just two weeks ago, I was talking to a special education teacher who works with severely developmentally challenged students in high school, and then she does a job skills program to help students apply for jobs, and she said the materials are from the 1980s and they're so old that she can't use them anymore. We don't look for jobs in the help-wanted section of the newspaper much anymore. She said she couldn't get her students past the comedy of the clothing that they were wearing in some of the textbooks because it doesn't match what we see today when we go to job interviews. We can provide summer school for thousands of Maine students. The research is well documented. Summer learning loss: Students learn, lose what they learn during the summer, specifically students who come from poverty communities where they don't have access to summer camps and enrichment programs. The research from the Maine Education Policy Research Institute shows that summer learning loss is severe in some of our communities. We can provide, with $15 million, we can provide free tuition to 1,400 students at the University of Maine. The tuition rates have gone up. It's harder and harder for families to provide tuition. We have among the highest student loan rates in the country. This is money that we could use to help our state grow and to help our education system. With that, thank you so much for your time, and I hope the committee will pass LD 501.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky. Any questions from the committee? Representative Good, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if you know this or somebody after you does, but I'm interested to know if Maine has a carve-out for farms, estate tax, or anything like that. I'm almost certain we do not, and I know that's been discussed as a potential, and I think Joel Johnson in his testimony mentioned something to that effect, but a carve-out for family farms and maybe even small businesses might be a good solution to deal with the stories that you hear.
Other questions from the committee? Representative Supphorth, please.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. I was presenting testimony at the State Local Government Committee. My name is Jerry Supphorth. I represent House District 95, Appleton, Hope, Warren, and half of Union. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kazinsky, the paragraph where you had the correction of just over, went from 100 to 400 families. At the end of that paragraph, you mentioned, or in your testimony, you say that Maine actually cut state funding, funding 7.3% per student, and then you compared it to Massachusetts. But then you made the comment, which you don't have here, and I don't know if you, whether you have it on your notes, about somehow where we rank.
Sure, absolutely.
What was that comment?
We were the worst, out of the 50 states, we were the lower 10. So in that, I have a, down at the bottom, sir, I have a footnote where that study is located. That Center for Budget Policies and Priority Studies from May 2014 is where I'm getting that information.
Okay, and if I have to follow up, so, but that's the increase or decrease in state funding, right? I mean, if you look at...
Adjusted for inflation.
Right, but if you actually looked at the level of state funding per student, we're pretty high, are we not?
No, we're not, sir. In fact, as a matter of fact, and that's, I'm going to, I have testimony prepared for Representative Marine's bill later around property taxes. When you actually adjust for inflation, in 2008, the state was spending about $905 million in 2008. These are not my numbers. These are numbers from the Department of Public Education. And today, and so on my chart, which is back at my seat, we're spending $848, that's state funding for public schools. Under the governor's budget, that's going to actually go down to, under the governor's proposed budget, and you're stealing some of my thunder from my testimony this afternoon, but it's going to go all the way down to $837. And so if we just take that 2008 number and adjust it for inflation, in today's dollars, that's going to feel like $724 million, and that's all in my testimony this afternoon. So we have lost some students. We have lost about 3,500 students in Maine. We've gone from 185,000 to a little bit over 181,000 students. So we've lost a few thousand students, but at the same time, adjusting for inflation, we've lost almost $200 million in state funding for K-12, pre-K through 12 education.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Kazinsky, please? CNN, thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Others who wish to speak in support of LD 501? Welcome, Mary Ann.
Good afternoon, Senator McCormick, Representative Good, members of the Taxation Committee. My name is Mary Ann Terouski. I am the political director of Maine State Employees Association, Service Employees International Union. We are a labor union that represents over 13,000 public sector publicly funded workers statewide. We're speaking today in support of LD 501. Maine's estate tax law is by far the most progressive, since it only impacts estates with a network exceeding $2 million. The estate tax is an important complement to the income tax, and it raises a significant amount of revenue for schools, healthcare, and other important services. Under current estate tax law, approximately 150 to 170 wealthy families pay any estate tax at all, and almost half of the decedents with enough wealth to trigger the estate tax are out-of-state residents. residents. The proposed FY '16, FY '17 biennial budget eliminates the estate tax, costing Maine taxpayers approximately 14 million in FY '17 and between 30 to 40 million annually after that. This tax cut would have to be paid for by shifts to other taxes or cuts in services. Returning Maine's estate tax to its previous 1 million dollar exclusion is necessary at a time when the governor's proposed biennial budget funds education for two years, eliminates homestead exemption for mayors under age 65, and eliminates revenue sharing in FY '17. These three initiatives will force increases in property taxes that will disproportionately impact Maine homeowners. As the Taxation Committee, please put Maine's working families first in support of LD 501. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terowski. Questions from the representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, you're representing the MSEA, SEIU local. Can you provide to us what your result was when you put this out to them for a vote? Was it 52% to 48, or was it 80% to 20? I want to know how your members feel about the testimony you're providing today.
We did not put this out for a vote. We have a board of trustees that makes decisions, who are comprised of homeowners, taxpayers in this state.
Other questions from the committee for Ms. Terowski? See you, Non. Thank you again. Others wishing to speak in support of LD 501? Welcome, Mr. Chair.
Senator McCormick, Representative Good, members of the Taxation Committee, my name is Ben Chin. I'm the political director of Maine People's Alliance. We're here today to testify in support of LD 501. We are, you know, we were opposed when the exclusion was changed back in the 125th legislature, and we are very supportive of going back to its original level. Like people who have gone before, you know, we made some comparisons as well around, you know, how much this money actually can mean, so there's an example in my testimony around general assistance. And I did want to just emphasize and spend the bulk of my time addressing some of the points that Representative Bigford and others have raised around concerns around family farms and small businesses. So famously, you know, the American Farm Bureau Federation was asked by the New York Times to produce a single example in all of America of any family farm that was ever lost because of the estate tax, and they could not do that. So I think for anyone who's coming after me to testify in opposition, one of the first questions that should be asked is, is there any, like, real concrete example that you can point to, a small business or a family farm that's ever been lost because of these rules? As Mr. Johnson mentioned, there are many ways that small businesses and family farms can actually reduce the value of their property. So, you know, one example I point out here is the Tax Reform Act of 1976. It allows farms and closely-held small businesses to calculate the value of their property current use rather than highest and best use value, and allow them to pay that out over a series of years. There's also ways that heirs can have minority ownership stakes in family farms and small businesses, and also help reduce them, reduce their tax liability. And what I like, what most of the written portion of my testimony is from is actually from the Institute of Policy Studies that has really gone into depth on some of the ways that tax attorneys use loopholes in our estate tax code to actually find ways around the estate tax. And so I think that while obviously lowering the exclusion amount to a million dollars is a very important piece of what a good estate tax amendment would look like, I think perhaps a harder task for lawmakers is actually understanding how modern tax law and tax attorneys are practicing and how wealthy people are using particularly trusts to avoid the payment of estate taxes. So there's, I think there's a pretty big difference between the statutory rate that we're asking to be paid in estate tax and the effective rate. So the four that are in here that I just wanted to highlight for you, is a grantor-retained annuity trust, and again, this is all from the Institute of Policy Studies. I just cut and paste it in here for you, so that's a citation. The link is in the footnote on the first page. And this is basically a way where wealthy individuals can basically sell their assets to a trust that they can control and basically exempt it from the estate tax stuff. The defector-grantor, the defective-grantor trust is a way where a donor basically takes advantage of the fact that it, what a trust that is sort of, they're responsible for under income tax law, they're actually not responsible for under state tax law, which is a big contradiction and seems like it's worth addressing. There's the discounting of asset values for state and gift tax purposes. This gets a little bit into what I was talking about with sort of minority stake in a business. There's a really important Supreme Court case, the State of Richmond v. Commissioner TC memo 2014-26, and that really gets into exactly how, you know, these percentage cuts actually really diminish the value of the state over time in really significant ways. And then there's a pretty complex one that's kept up here as dynasty trusts that involve generational skipping trusts, where basically grandparents are sort of able to, grandparents are able to skip over their grandchildren, pass the trust on to their, sorry, grandparents skip over their children, pass the money on to their grandchildren, and that allows basically this multi-generational trust to get built up that, again, is not subject to any estate tax laws. So again, we are fully supportive of lowering the exclusion, but to our mind, you know, one of the real policy issues that you guys face is how do we actually make these laws work in an age where there are tax attorneys that do their absolute best to make sure that most, if not all, of a person's estate are actually not subject to any estate taxes whatsoever? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Questions from the committee? See you, Non. Thank you again. Others wishing to speak in support of LD 501? See you, Non. How many members of the audience would like to speak in opposition to LD 501? Welcome. Thank you.